All right, it is 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 6th, and I'm going to call to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. And we'll begin this meeting as we do all others by the Pledge of Allegiance. Caitlin, if you could lead us, that would be perfect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. We don't have anyone in the audience this evening, so I'm going to skip the public comment section because there's no one here to comment, so we will move right into the reporting section of our agenda. Meredith, if you would like to do your report, I would appreciate that very much.
You're gonna go first?
Sure. All right.
Perfect.
So, the first week of school got off to a great start. There were a few hiccups with bells and buses at the high school level, but those issues are being sorted out. Both schools conducted successful fire drills on Monday, taking into account accommodations for the new structural changes. Both soccer teams have a winning streak, the boys 4-0, the girls 3-0, and they traveled to Moltenboro on Tuesday. The cross-country team met at Portsmouth Christian Academy today, and the boys took first place.
Excellent.
And the Blue Devils varsity team has a record of 0-1 with their next game at Campbell High School. For upcoming dates, students will have the day off on Tuesday for primary elections at the elementary school, and the school board will meet on the 20th of September at 7:00.
Perfect, thank you very much. Meredith, would you?
That's good, so I don't duplicate everything you can say.
We'll make sure to make that adjustment moving forward.
So, coming down is the enrollment report, first day of school, which is not our official enrollment, but just so you have that information, we are up two students over last year, so really no significant changes. Fluctuations occurred between elementary and high school, junior, senior high, as we knew they would. From April 1st, which is our last official enrollment count, we are up, sorry, up 16 students at the junior, senior high and down 14 at the elementary, and that's what we anticipated with the classes rolling over. So, right where we thought we would be.
There are like six new students in the high school male school, just new kids.
Actually 12 in just the junior high, but we lose a lot of students as well. So again, our net is up two. We are finalizing MOUs for some alternative evacuation sites. Those aren't public information, but just so people are aware. NCEP grant applications for our staff are due September 15th. Ninth grade Chromebooks were rolled out today, and sixth through eighth grade will go out next week. I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if memory serves. The auditors are in this week conducting the financial audit for the schools. We need to bid our special ed transportation contract this year, so we'll be working on getting that out in advance of budget. The elementary school has been named a blue ribbon school for its volunteers, level of volunteer service, so there'll be a recognition of that on October 26th, along with a number of other schools from across the state. And we thank our volunteers for their efforts there.
Excellent.
And then, back to the opening of school. So as Caitlin mentioned, there are clearly some, and we knew there would be, and we talked about this last week, some traffic challenges with drop-off and pickup at both buildings. The junior, senior high, we just want to remind people that when you're dropping off and picking up, go all the way to the back of the lot and circle around to the front. Saw some people today going in the opposite direction of traffic, which just presents some challenges for folks trying to go in the direction we've asked them to, so please be mindful of that. Also, Lamprey Healthcare is not a drop-off and pickup site, and there've been a number of people using that. They have reached out to the police department. We're gonna work with the police department to try to resolve that, but please do not make that your go-to station. I know today was an unusual day with the rain, but it is not only today. Bus routes are evolving, I would say. We'll probably have some slight revisions to routes that you'll see next week. Again, changes there, we're in part to balance loads on our buses, as well as to accommodate the pickup schedule at the elementary school, because we need to have all of our traffic operating through the front entrance. So we have buses, and parents, and our walkers all exiting from the same place at the same time, because buses can't use the path behind the school. So we ask that you kind of be patient with that. I've been on the phone with the bus company every day. They are doing their best to kind of work with those times and make those adjustments, but it is still evolving. I think that is all I need to say.
Excellent, one thing.
Oh, one more thing, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
The confirmed with the DOE today that our building aid application remains intact, but as the way that works with the state, our project is now considered a retroactive project, which would not be covered by any new funding if it were to become available unless there are legislative changes. So I encourage people to reach out to their legislators, legislators, to encourage them to make that change to the statute.
If people are doing the pickup at the junior, senior high, and your goal is to get out of your car to pick your kid up, don't get in the line to do that, because that disrupted something yesterday with someone getting out of the car.
And you should pull into park.
Just pull into park, because, and there were a few spaces today that I noticed. So if that's what you want to do and walk to meet your kid, which, just make sure you find a spot to do it.
Meredith, state aid were to become available, does that mean that we would be ineligible? Or we'd have to reapply, or what?
Our application is intact, but our project is not considered a new application. It would be considered a retroactive application at this point, because the funding would be for new projects proposed as of July 1.
So it would not be considered?
That's correct, that's why you should contact your legislators to encourage that aid to be retroactive, but that is not the way the statute reads.
What?
Vote Tuesday. Give them a little.
In Jemishia time period, and we were discussing it in your log.
Well, we got squeaks, it's like, we got squeaks downed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that's unfortunate. And I, you know, as Meredith said, contact people to get that changed potentially, because we need to be able to access those funds, I think. Moving along, the next thing is the school board committee reports. One of the things we talked about last week, when we were talking about goals, was to start the policy committee meeting, and Meredith reached out to Ingrid and myself, and there is a meeting scheduled for that committee on November 20, November, September 20th at 12:30. So that is happening, so after we have that, we will report back to the board as to what happens. Any other committee reports from anyone else?
Nothing substantial since the last meeting on facilities, right? Since we've only been one week out.
Yep.
We had our first CIP meeting yesterday afternoon, put together the schedule for new members, of which there were two to tour facilities. We also had scheduled, and I left my notes at home, so I apologize. I'm gonna take a stab, no I'm not, because I'll be wrong. The following week, we're going to have the department presentation, they can't.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
Seventeenth and eighteenth. The seventeenth and the eighteenth, seventeenth for sure, eighteenth if needed. And then the following week, the group will deliberate on the whole CIP program and make its recommendations. So it's pretty great. As I mentioned last meeting, in fact, the facilities project is complete. Greg changes the whole complexion of the CIP project. It's 80% of the work is done, so, and he will be part, by the way, of the standing committee from this point on.
Any other committee reports? Just a couple. Caitlin did a great job reviewing the calendar, but we do have next Tuesday no school for students because of the election day coming, the election will take place at the elementary school from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Let me see if there's anything else I'm missing on that. And then there's a building committee meeting at 5:00 PM on the 18th of September, so that gets us through this month. Moving on to discussion items, I was gonna ask you guys if we could, for next meeting, which is the workshop, where we're going to have a presentation on special ed. My thought is that we bring the communication conversation up to that, as well as the goals conversation then. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so that will move that conversation till the 20th. Meredith, would you like to lead us through the budget guidelines and schedule?
I've provided a draft schedule, and per the board's policy, I'm again asking for some guidelines for what the board would like to see in the upcoming year's budget process. The schedule conforms with last year's calendar essentially, includes our deadlines to report to the budget committee, as well as deliberation, deliberative session, excuse me, and the public vote.
I know what I'm looking for, I'm looking for reasons. I want to understand anything that's going on in that budget. I would like to understand reasons why, and to make sure that we've looked at every part of our budget, to make sure that we don't have to do anything without a real purpose. Does that make sense? I want, I want to be able to, if somebody asks me a question, I want to be able to answer it, fully understanding what I'm talking about, and not have to say, well, you know, there are reasons, and we're gonna learn about it. I want to have complete understanding, so that we don't run into what we ran into last year.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you said. I'm sure what you said, I'm not sure. You talk about all aspects of the budget.
I want to be able to explain it, so.
All the budget detail.
I want to be able to explain, if there's an issue that we're gonna have feedback on, we're gonna have pushback on, I want to be able to stand behind this board's decision, say, we've looked into everything, we have, we understand why we're doing what we're doing, here's the purpose of it, here's the future goal. That's what I want to be able to explain to people. I don't, I don't want to have $80,000 back into our budget, because people aren't understanding completely why it was taken out. Does that make sense?
I think what you're saying, and I'm talking to you to make it helpful, not uncomfortable. I think what you're saying is you want to understand the organization. If we add a secretary, you want to know why? If we eliminate a parry, you want to know why?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those are staffing issues, and staffing and performance issues are things that we would discuss in non-public session, right?
Performance issues you would discuss in non-public.
Okay.
The broad picture of the budget, with respect to number of physicians, FTE, et cetera, you would discuss in public. Budget is a public process.
One thing that I, you know, think that I need to have a better grasp on is, you know, and this is something that came through last year, but even something just more rudimentary for me, understanding what the percentage increase is looking like, what the implication that's gonna be. I mean, and that's something that's been in the past, but I'd just like to see that again. What impact is this directly having on the taxpayer, in terms of these decisions that we're making? Because I think there's a lot of moving parts with that this year, with the bond.
CBA.
Yeah.
Now we have a special ed blessing. There's so much coming down at us, we, I want to be able to, like you, just be able to understand it.
The CBA isn't part of your operating budget, it's a separate warrant, and we won't have that while we're doing the rest of the budget.
Right, but that will be, that will come up in a conversation when I'm at the grocery store. It's just all part of understanding how, overall, the budget, how it's impacted.
You and I have shared disagreement on this ever since we've been on the board, and I just want to say my piece, and that is that I don't, I don't have the competency for the understanding, for the comparisons, to be able to support, for example, the need for a special needs secretary. I don't. I don't have the need to, or the ability, or the capability, or the understanding, to understand whether we need an additional baseball coach. I don't have the understanding to decide whether we need five powers or four, or five English teachers or three. And I'm just, I can't put myself in a position of being able, nor do I think I should, of trying to explain to the community why we have a new secretary to the special needs person. I mean, the whatever, I just, whatever. I just don't think it's our job.
Sometimes when I ask the questions, you'll understand why. So sometimes if I ask that question, it might make you really uncomfortable, and you might not like me asking that question, but sometimes the answer might have a light for both of us, right? There might be that light where Meredith says, this is what, my decision, this is what I chose to do, and I can say that to the public. No, that's what she chose to do. You know, that, that doesn't come back on me, because when I sign my name on that, I want to make sure I completely understand it, and I think last year I failed that, and I want to make sure I don't do that this year. So I'm probably gonna ask a lot of questions.
That helps, that you're asking questions. It sounded like you wanted to have the information, so that you could answer somebody else's questions, but instead of ads, asking the questions, so that the clarifications are out there. That's, that's more understandable than, I would be very uncomfortable having to answer to the public about staffing. I would much rather that is done by a professional than I have to do it.
I do, I agree. I just don't want to do it, I don't want to.
If I, if I could ask an intelligent question, that's, that's my task.
Not dissimilar from saying to the police chief, explain to me why you want another patrol officer. What do you mean? I don't understand criminal activity in Newmarket. I don't understand the fact they need to train somebody, that's why, I mean, it's just, I get it, I honestly do. Elizabeth and I can, I.
Oh, we respectfully disagree on this, and, like I said, you're probably gonna be angry at me, and you can throw the bobs you want. Those are the questions I'm gonna ask. And, but now Meredith knows that, and she, she knows how to answer them. She does what she wants to do, right?
I don't think, I don't think you and I would resolve it.
No.
No, okay. Send my piece.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on this? I mean, I don't know if we want to get into, you know, we don't want to see a, and I don't know that I'm equipped to even make this decision to say, we don't want to see above a certain percentage increase, or anything of that nature. I don't know if that's something that people are interested in. I'm not sure that I, as I said, have the ability to make an effective decision that way, but I do know that sometimes, that's some of the way it's sometimes done. But, so it's just something that we can think about, if you guys would like to entertain that.
I am planning on going to the New Hampshire School Board Association budget training, and then they have, they have a couple that are related to funding and budget, and I'm planning on going to those, and I may come out of that with some better ideas, questions that.
Perfect.
Would help us to understand the process. I'm hoping that that will, that training.
Please let us know what you learn.
Anybody wants a carpool with me, sign up.
When is it, Ingrid, do you remember?
Next week.
Next week, yep. It's a Thursday. 12th and 13th.
Perfect.
It's their evening meetings.
I've seen it done both ways in the corporate world, where you get a directive, no more than a 5% increase. And they bring Dragom in, and they say, okay, cut out a percent.
Right.
And then, but it's, I, I don't think you, I think you gotta go on the, I mean, the time it's gonna go up, with the time it's gonna go up. Health insurance is gonna go up.
Right.
So for us to mandate that health insurance can't.
You can't.
I have the same attitude, tell us what the right thing to do is, and our job is to decide whether the community can bear.
And I think it's important also, when, where I look at the schedule, you know, that October 25th is gonna be the first time that we're all looking at the stuff, to see where, where it's going, what the suggestions are, what the recommendations are, and that's gonna be the time for us to get those questions in, to start it, to, you know, maybe, maybe I can't think of all my questions then, but maybe on the next day I sit down and say, here are the thoughts that I have. Shoot an email out saying, this is what I'd like for this November 1st deadline, November 1st meeting, to follow up on, so that people do get their questions asked thoroughly and appropriately, so that we, we can head some of that stuff off with the past. Any other thoughts about that?
I know, what I want to see is the least impact on our school. Our kids are going through enough right now, and I want to make sure that our class sizes stay the way we like them. I would like to see just the least impact on the kids that we can have.
Do we, is the policy talk about class size?
We never have developed a class size policy.
But, this is just the way we do it. This is the way we've done it in Newmarket, we've always been able to do it. I'd like to try to continue to do that.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Keep our class sizes relatively small.
Well, what is, what is, I mean, but if you're directing the superintendent, I, whether it's relatively small.
So Colin had a class of three, you know, in his AP classes. Cameron had a class of 15 to 16. That's how our school is growing. So, I'd like to keep our class sizes at 18 to 20. I don't want to see 30 crammed into a room that's built for 15.
But don't you think, Elizabeth, that that's our job as a board to say that to the superintendent, that we want a class size of no more than 15? Or what, I don't know what the, I don't know what the right number is. I know state won't allow you to do 30. I'm just trying to give some direction.
Right, I understand, I, no, I get where you're going.
I mean, if you say to her, class size 15, we can talk about it as a group, as to whether that makes sense or not. And then if we say yes or no, but.
So that's where I do say to Meredith, like, she, I, she, at this point, she gets us. She's like, I know Elizabeth does not want to see a class of 25 in a room for 20. You know, so she's gonna say to me, Elizabeth, I have 25 in this classroom, here's a reason why. And I'm, and I'm gonna understand that, but it's all said out loud, so you don't have the scuttlebutt of people going, you know, there's 25 in this group, and there's 30 in this group, and why can't we split this up? It's, there's a reason why I ask my questions.
That's a hard thing to discuss, though, in October, because class sizes for even second semester are not set up. The class registration probably is, but for next year, when we're looking at budgets for next year, we're not going to have that. There are recommendations at all levels for what's developmentally appropriate for a number of students.
If you guys don't want to answer the questions, or hear me ask the questions, I'm still gonna ask them, and then the board can do as they will. I will ask the questions, though. That's just the way it's gonna be. I, I ask those questions for a reason. I want our public to know our class sizes are getting bigger. We don't have AP classes of three to five. We now have AP classes of 20 to 25, guessing, right? But we want people to know that. So when they look at our budget, they can understand where the money's going, why we have five English teachers, why we have four, you know, it all comes for a reason. So it's not me questioning, it's not Meredith, she has a whole administration that's, that's making these decisions. So I want to understand why they're being made, so that we can explain it, and it shows in the budget numbers. You know, she.
Or so that we can ask the questions, so that Meredith can explain it.
Right.
That, that's what I want to make sure that we understand, is that we're not trying to explain things that we have had a briefing on, but have not been part of that whole, sort out all the data, sort of thing, sitting at the table, working all the data with the principals.
That we haven't done that?
No, no. Are we, are we expected to sit in with the principals when they set up their class schedules, with the counselors, when they?
I don't think that those are the questions I'm asking. I think I'm just asking for general numbers and understanding.
But you're talking about explaining to people, and I'm saying, we want to have our professionals explain that. We want to ask the questions, but we want to have the explanations to come from.
For some reason, that's a, somebody's stuck on that. I have said this before, I've been pulled over in the grocery store, I've been pulled over in the gas station, I've been pulled over at the park, you know, I have conversations with people.
I have conversations with people too, and I say, I'll forward those to Meredith, or to the appropriate, through, through Meredith to the principals, so that they can answer them, rather than answering it myself.
I, because usually I have notes, usually I do things, and if I don't have the answer, I find it out. If I can't find it, then I send them on their way. It's just, I, that's how I've done it, I've no, you know, I'm comfortable with it.
And I'm thinking, when I went to the New Hampshire School Board Association training, one of the points that they made with us was that, yes, we can refer somebody to the superintendent, or to the principals through the superintendent, or to review one of the taped meetings, but it's not our position to always be answering the questions by the, than to say, the figures are here, or the information is in. And I'm taking your concerns, but I'm not trying to.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm just stuck on where we're stuck at, so that's, that's fine.
And it's not my responsibility to have all the answers. Yes, Meredith?
I was just gonna read the policy, which is DVC, Preparation of Budget Documents. Superintendent of Schools shall prepare a budget annually for consideration of the school board for the efficient and effective operation of the school district. The school board will adopt guidelines and a schedule each year for the timely submission of the budget to the board and the budget committee. So guidelines that I've written down are rationale for budget changes of concern, understanding of the tax impact, least impact on our schools, and Elizabeth's requesting class sizes of somewhere between 18 and 20.
It's a good place, sorry, I mean, that's the input that you've gotten from us, I think that's. I'm not sure I agree with the input, but I don't know how this is to do it.
Any other thoughts? All right, the next thing on our agenda is the CIP proposal.
There should be enough there. Looks like there are not enough there, so you may have to share. We need to double up. Oh, yes, there are.
No, wait.
Take a minute. We'll look at them.
Is everyone home?
So the draft CIP was submitted to the committee today, so this is what we have put forward. First two pages are the existing facilities project, so there's really nothing to look at there. It just breaks out the annual cost of those over the next five years. The next page was also submitted last year. It's $167,000 projected to come from our capital reserve fund to deal with the replacement of roof number four at the junior, senior high, where that was one of the, where the roof identified for the next fiscal year in need of replacement, according to our roof repair schedule. Item number three is the replacement of school accounting software, beginning in FY '21. As you know, we're doing the town software at this point. The software that we use is no longer being supported by the software company, so we project that we're going to need to replace it.
I assume there's an error there, that this is not submitted by Greg?
Greg submitted all the sheets together, but this was Lisa's number.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The next page is replacement of the carpeting sections of the elementary school classrooms that aren't being touched by the renovation, renovation. that aren't being touched by the renovations, renovations with tile. These are not our students, so we did not violate any FERPA regulations, but we're projecting to do about four classrooms a year, which is a cost of fifty thousand dollars for each of those five years, beginning in FY20. And then finally, we need to replace our point of service software for the food service operations, and that's a ten thousand dollar cost, again, looking at FY21. Finally, again, a repeat from last year, the projected payments for a vehicle for facilities department. So their staff do not continue to have to use our personnel vehicles to move things around the district, and we can have an operable snow pile.
Meredith, we had a discussion last night at CIP about, and I don't, I don't propose that we try it this year, but the discussion, which I thought was a good one, was about the, the ad alternatives within the project. For example, if we decided someday to buy a generator, which was, I think, an ad alternative we decided not to. If we decided on the, on the, not the patio...
Courtyard.
Courtyard. Can't afford it now. It seems to me that those kinds of things could be put in here, too.
That's correct.
We, we haven't had time to do it, but...
Sure.
So what I suggested to Greg last night was that we somehow get that ad, it doesn't die, that somehow we get that ad alternative list integrated into the CIP somehow, if that's the right place to put it.
Right.
I'm not sure it is, but...
I think we're early enough still in the building process that it's hard to project right now what will make it in from that list and what won't.
I agree.
I think we know there are some things that certainly won't, but we still have bond interest, we've got our tax impact fees, so there are still some pieces to go through and whatever may be left of contingency at the end of the project. So I would suggest that you might have a better sense of that next year going into budget.
I agree.
But this year I would not recommend.
I agree. I agree. I just thought it was, it was actually a pretty, pretty good...
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great list of things that we think we may need in the future.
Meredith, were the bleachers on this list last year in the CIP?
Bleachers are being replaced this fiscal year.
Right. Were they, they were on the CIP last year?
Correct.
I thought so. Out of the operated budget?
Yep.
I thought so. Any other questions about this document? No. Moving on to action items, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the...
Are we, are we supposed to comment on this, or is it...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, would you like to?
Yeah, I would.
Yes.
It's the same comment I made last year. I can't support this pickup truck. I had a discussion with, I think I said the same thing last year, so... The schools are the first priority of the Department of Public Works for plowing. They always have been, and they always will be. And the reason they may not be a priority, according to the director, was the fact that the school wouldn't be open, so they'd go do something else. So I don't see any need whatsoever to have a pickup plow truck operated by people that are not plow truck operators. I think it's, I think it's a mistake. If this were to, if this were to eliminate hand shoveling, which it indicates here, would, I don't understand, I don't understand that. Is it a big deal to me? No. I just, I just think it's a waste of money.
Do we have access to town trucks for the things that people put in the backs of pickup trucks to move?
For the sake of expediency, haven't we already voted on this?
That's what I raised my hand to do.
Oh, okay.
This was approved last year, and it's in your operating budget for this year.
Okay.
But to answer your question, no. So people use their personal vehicles to transport furniture between buildings or things across the street to the storage unit, or to the storage unit around the back of the school, to pick up equipment that's being delivered to the, you know, being donated to the schools or back and forth. So from a liability perspective, you know, it's people's choice whether or not they want to use their personal vehicles. I personally don't feel great about asking them to do that, nor would I ask them to do that. It's one thing, you know, if I want to bring in my little pickup and throw things in the back, but I don't expect employees to do that, and from time to time, things go wrong when you do that.
And by the way, just to be sure, I'm not arguing about getting a pickup truck. I just don't want...
The plow.
The, the DPW are professionals at plowing. They know where to put the snow, and I just, I think this is an accidental way to... It just doesn't make sense to me. So that's my...
So in other words, you're thinking, maybe we have to look at some kind of a policy on usage once we get to that point?
No, I have a pickup truck.
No, no, in terms of policy on usage, so it's clear. If, if we're not supposed to, if we don't want our employees doing the plowing, put it in there.
Well, they won't be doing it if they don't have a truck.
Yeah, but what we're saying is that this is already been approved, that we voted on it last year.
They're, they're going to have a truck.
Huh?
They're going to have a truck.
Oh!
That's what she just said. That's why, that's why I asked that first.
I guess my comment last year wasn't agreed. Okay.
So I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the August 30th, 2018, public and non-public meetings.
So moved.
I'll second that.
A motion, we have a motion from Mr. Zink with a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes of August 30th. Are there any amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I feel like we might have one abstention.
Abstention.
Yes. Four and one. The next thing is approval of the manifest. Al, do you have those?
I don't.
Oh. Somehow they ended up back in my hands. I move to make a motion to accept the manifest of the following of one hundred thousand, two hundred and twen, uh, one hundred thousand, twenty-nine. You guys, I can't. Here you go. Algebra and geometry today.
Is there a summary sheet? Oh, it's okay. I make a motion to approve the check register in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, along with the payroll check register in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Kennison and a second for Mr. Zink to accept the manifests as recorded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next thing that we have is a donation from the Granite Youth Alliance for two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Meredith, could you tell us something about that?
This has been an annual donation since I've been here. I can't tell you the history further back than that, but it's a United Way donation. Granite State Youth Alliance is an organization that operates at the junior senior high. There are two advisors. This stipend essentially covers the cost of the advisors. It's not funded in our operating budget, and I don't know how many right now women's students participate each year.
I, actually, I participate. It's a state, it's primarily Rockingham and Stratford County that participates in this organization. There's fifteen of us from seventh grade now, I think, obviously up till twelve. So, yeah.
Great. I seek a motion to accept the donation from the Granite Youth Alliance in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Ms. McKenney to accept the donation as listed. We're grateful for this opportunity for our students, as always. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of accepting this donation, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a second reading of this policy.
No.
No, we do not have a second reading of the policy.
The association, the meeting of the association that I mentioned at the last meeting is still scheduled for next week.
Okay.
So this will return to you on a future agenda.
Perfect.
I just have a question in reading that. How do we deal with phone calls during, what is it, Blizzard Bags, where the students can contact the teachers during the Blizzard Days or whatever?
Sure. We don't have Blizzard Bag Days at this point.
Oh, okay. So that, that answers it. We don't do it. All right.
Just a couple reminders before we go into non-public session. Our next meeting will be a workshop. No?
We need to do this appointment.
Oh, yes, we do. Thank you. The next thing is an appointment, a teacher appointment. Meredith, would you like to go through that with us a little bit? We talked about it in non-public session last week.
Sure. Jessica Terrio has begun work with us, given the board's authorization to have me hired during the summer, but we want to formally acknowledge her appointment as our seventh grade English Language Arts teacher. She is a new teacher to the district, but comes with us previously having served as an intern for our seventh grade teacher who has moved to elementary school, and with great experience and is highly recommended and by all student reports. She is a hit so far.
Excellent. I seek a motion to approve the appointment of Jessica Terrio as seventh grade Language Arts teacher.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney, a second from Ms. Alberg to approve the appointment of Ms. Terrio. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Now, as I was saying before, our next school board meeting will be a workshop, which is going to be on September 20th. We're going to review special ed stuff at that meeting, as well as school board goals and communication stuff, so if you guys could sort of think about that for the next time, that would be helpful. Building committee meeting on the 18th at five. Our meeting's at seven on the 20th.
And my one final plug would be, people saw, parents saw, certainly my letter yesterday, and community will see in the town newsletter tomorrow, just a request, if you're interested in being a part of the Strategic Framework Planning Committee, to let me know that by next Friday, the 14th.
Yes, I, I have three people who got your letter who asked me to help them understand what it was and what the commitment was. So I think you're going to have some, some very qualified candidates.
I've had some good outreach thus far, so...
Good. All right. Is there anything else before we move into non-public? Hearing none, I seek a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A32B and C.
So moved.
I have a motion for Ms. McKenney and a second for Mr. Zink, and we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKenney?
Aye.
And me, and we are going into non-public session at 7:40 PM. Thank you, everyone. Caitlin, take care. No school next Tuesday, the 11th, promoting day, voting at the elementary school, 7:07.
Are you waiting? No, I'm not yet.
Next time.
Have a good night, everyone.
Take care.